CC Media, I'm still waiting for that different screen to appear. I'm not sure whether we're ready to go or not. Great, thank you. A call to order this meeting of the Salem City Council for Wednesday, October 25th, 2023. Tonight, we have a work session. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton.
I'm here.
Counselor Nishioka.
Here.
Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Gwen.
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike will be a little late. Counselor Varney.
Here.
And Mayor Hoy.
Here. Join me in the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Stapleton, approval of the special meeting agenda?
Thank you. I move approval of the special meeting agenda with the revisions to item 2.8.
Second.
Motion by Stapleton, second by Phillips. Would you like to address the addition?
Sure. It looks like we just have an addition of an attachment here that is a lot of numbers. Josh, do you want to give a little bit more on, I mean, can Josh give more on that, please, Mayor?
Sure.
Good evening. Josh Eggleston, Chief Financial Officer. The added attachment is a breakdown of all four options with the costing detail by year, in case you really want to dive into the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we also have two different packets of written testimony that counsel has received prior to 5:00 PM this evening. Is there further discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Nishioka.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Gwen.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Varney.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Mayor Hoy.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, we are now on to the continuation of discussion of the revised fiscal year 2024 budget. I will turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Sayley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. So Josh and the leadership team have put together some information responding to your request and inquiries and input from our September 18th work session. On September 18th, staff presented one option to balance the budget that reflected the reductions being taken across the board while working to minimize the impacts to police and fire. In response to the input we received from council, we prepared three different options that each allocate the reductions differently. As you will see, each option uses the September 18th staff proposal as a baseline and works from there. Option two, that Josh will be talking about here in a few minutes, addresses the request to what would it look like if we kept two park rangers and continued the SOS team and expanded the SOS team? Option three reflects no reductions to public safety services, and option four continues sheltering services. And of course, we're working with a zero-sum game here, so you know, if you take money from one place, or if you put money in one place, you're going to have to take it from another place. And the staff report spends quite a bit of time talking about the impacts of those different reductions on programs and services. And of course, you know, there's literally an infinite number of options. You know, we could continue to generate options for a very long time, but we think that the options that we presented present a, at least kind of the extremes of, you know, all public safety, all of our sheltering services, and then of course, the sort of balanced approach also. So your input tonight will be used as we move forward, you know, depending again on what happens in November. Our hope is that this work would allow us to sort of jumpstart that process if changes are needed to our adopted budget this year. In addition to the budget options, we're also going to be presenting some information on vacant positions. You had questions about vacant positions, and we also looked pretty closely at furloughs and had some discussions with various union representatives in regards to that. Josh and members of the leadership team will now review a PowerPoint presentation that provides further information about these options and issues, and we look forward to continuing the conversation and responding to your questions and receiving your feedback and direction this evening. So, Josh?
Thank you, Keith. Just a quick reminder, while we're in the chambers, it is a work session, so feel free to raise your hand and ask questions as we go through. Don't feel like you have to wait till the end of the presentation. Real quick, goals for the work session, a quick recap of how did we get here, some prior base budgeting information. We're not going to really cover that in the presentation, but there's some information in your packet. As Keith mentioned, general fund vacancies, furlough costing, the three additional budget reduction options, and then there's an attachment for the 2018 Sustainable Service Revenue Task Force. And then outcomes, if we get to them, who should be involved in continuing conversations, and what should community engagement look like? You've seen part of this graph before, and I apologize that it's small up on the screen, but the highlighted portion there on the far right represents the baseline forecast. As you can see, the fund balance is projected to decline. It's really just for illustrative purposes. We can't budget negative fund balance, and we can't let it go negative, but it is there as a projection. In the earlier, there to the left, you can see the fund balance policy that was implemented, some other reductions that were made after the Great Recession, 2010, 2013, some PERS legislative rate relief. The state tried for some PERS reform, and it was overturned in the courts. So the city took the prudent financial approach to continue to budget at the higher rates, and eventually that did get overturned, and we needed those higher rates. That fund balance went up, and then it went down based on those higher PERS rates. And then you can see in 2017, reopened Fire Station 8, the addition of the Homeless Rental Assistance Program, and then in 2019, the reopening of Fire Station 11, and then the large upward trend there. In 2020, you can see the implementation of the city operations fee, and what really drives the increase in fund balance is the one-time CARES and ARPA funding that we received. On this chart here, it looks almost exactly the same as it did on September 18th when I presented it. The one change is this highlighted cell. In 2023, it was an estimate, it's still an estimate, we're still in the midst of the audit process. The auditors have been here all week actually looking at our financials. Previously, this was 36.35, it's now 36.62, so a little additional fund balance coming from 2023. It doesn't materially change the financial picture or the outlook, but it did want to note that update. The revenues here, no change to this revenue number. The total expenditure or budget appropriation, unspent contingency, and 2.5% savings, organic vacancy savings. We'll be talking about vacancies quite a bit tonight. That leads to the net expenditures, so this is actually money that goes out with payroll or vendor, vendor payments. The fund balance spend, so this is the difference between what you start with and what you're ending with. So this is projecting $9.4 million of deficit spending, and then the ending fund balance of 27.21, which just to call out the fund balance policy of 15% of revenues, it does end, our projected end at $1.75 million over that fund balance policy. However, with this picture, you can see the quick increase in that fund balance spend from that 9.4 up to 18.95. And I will say, this is somewhat conservative with our five-year forecast. We've seen some other increases with the five-year forecast and the update that will be coming in January could look slightly worse than this picture.
Counselor Gwen has a question?
And this is probably a question that you've answered 100 times, so I apologize. The revenue at 1,69.69, is that based on actual tax assessments? Because our tax bills have gone out. So is that based on the actual, or is that still an estimate?
This is a budgeted revenue number, so it's still an estimate at this point. Even though statements go out, we don't know who's going to get a 3% discount, we don't know who's not going to pay right away. So as far as how much we actually receive, it's still an estimate. That, this estimate takes that into account. So if you look at the property taxes we actually levy, it's going to be higher than the number that's embedded in that estimate, but we take into account that discount and delinquency that we see.
So when do we know? Like, when do we have a better idea?
So we'll get a large receipt here in November for that first, that first bit, and then we won't, we won't know until the year closes, right? Because every month, we get more property tax receipts, some from the current year, some from prior years. So we estimate for both of them. We've gotten really close in the past with our estimates, but, but it really is unknown until the year actually closes.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Microphone, please.
Thank you. You're talking, when you're saying that when the year closes, do you mean fiscal year closing?
Yeah, I do mean the fiscal year closing. We, we continue to receive property tax receipts every single month. We get a large receipt in November, December, and then, and then it trails off from there. But even, you know, June, the fiscal year end, we still receive property tax receipts in June, and then if we receive July and August payments that are still for that current year, we receipt them back to that fiscal year. But, but it's an ongoing process with a large receipt there in November.
Thank you.
Counselor Phillips?
Thank you. Josh, I guess I'm trying to formulate my question as I talk. I have like two different components. One, I presume that this estimate is the way things have always been done, and there's probably a lot of regulation locally and at the state level that we have to follow to come up with these as accurate as possible estimates. Is that correct? Like, are there rules?
So, so the, the criteria has to be a good faith estimate, right? So we have to make sure there's a reason behind the estimate. So we use both historical knowledge and then subject matter experts, depending on the revenue source. So like, if we're talking about planning fees, we'll talk to the planning, the planning group. If we're talking about court fines, we'll talk to court. So it is a evolving process, but no, there's no strict regulation about this is how you'll estimate it, but it's our best projection at this time.
Does our yearly audit overlap with this?
It does. So the audit doesn't encompass the five-year forecast. It doesn't encompass everything that happens in the prior year. So currently, the audit is underway for fiscal year 2023 that ended in June, and you know, they're already looking at the budget for 2024 because that happened last year.
And is that where we get the, like hindsight's 2020, is the audit the point at time where we know everything that actually happened?
So audit, the audit completes the fiscal year, so that, yeah, that's the cutoff. So it's pretty unusual to have a prior period adjustment, so that, that's the period where, that's the fiscal year 2023 activity, and it's a fresh start for 2024.
Okay. So I get the sense this is the most accurate, best estimate that we have, which leads to my second kind of part of the concept of my question. Historically, how close have we been? Like, what's our variance? Like, a couple percent, 3%?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head. Things change, I will say that. We're still fairly early in the fiscal year 2024, so when you're looking at that number, it's still based on a pretty general practice, because you know, while we had, you know, budget monitoring means, I had a couple today with a couple departments, we're still pretty early. So as far as we're looking at vacancies, we're looking at changes in programming, you know, that next month, we'll be making our first official estimate for what we're going to start fiscal year 2025 with. But as far as months that are closed, we just have July, August, and September right now.
Have we ever seen a variance of like more than 10% in anyone's historical knowledge?
I'm going to say yes, because of like ARPA or CARES funding, you know, unexpected things that happen.
So it would take like, I mean, ARPA was a one-time federal supplement of tens of millions of dollars. So barring something like ARPA, have our estimates on what we would get through taxation and other, you know, franchise fees and so forth, have they ever been off by 10%?
Not for, not for property taxes or franchise fees. There are individual changes, like we've talked about the Measure 110 changes to the marijuana tax, you know, the state share revenue, that was unexpected. So legislative policy changes, things like that that can happen mid-year, those, those are unexpected.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Nordike?
Good evening, folks. I don't have a question, but I do want to explain my tardiness. I don't want anyone to think that I'm late because I don't think this is important, but we did have a situation at my office that required us to call the police. The situation is now resolved and everyone's fine, but obviously, I wasn't going to leave our building until I felt it was safe and the situation resolved. So with that in mind, I look forward to playing catch-up this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
And just one final note on this slide is that if this scenario played out, we'd be essentially out of fund balance in fiscal year 2026. And again, this is the baseline forecast if we had all our positions hired that were added. We looked at a very similar slide just a second ago. This is the same slide but with the reduction scenario included. So you can see that blue line, it stays above the yellow line. So the yellow line is that fund balance policy, and you can see the blue line stays above. So all four options that we're talking about this evening mirror this trajectory. So the numbers move around a little bit, but they solve for that same picture where you end fiscal year 2028 just above that fund balance policy. Again, this matches the previous display. Again, the updated beginning fund balance, total revenues, you can see the estimated reductions there. The net expenditures, the thing that we'll note here is that we end, we project to end at $30.18 million, which is the 1.85 over the fund balance policy. So just slightly above that amount. It still has deficit spending because we are above that fund balance policy at this point, so it's, it spins down fund balance. I guess the only thing I'd add about that is what that means into the future is that that needs to turn around. So it needs to be structurally balanced going forward, so we'd have continued reductions each year to get to a sustainable picture. This is something new. We've had a lot of questions about property taxes and how they work, and why in some cases, new growth doesn't fund additional services. To that end, I took a 12-house block here in Salem that was built from 2019 to 2021. The reason it's a little bit older is because I wanted to make sure it was completely on the tax rules. Brand-new property takes a little bit to get updated. The real market value, which is the value if the properties are sold according to the county, is just over 5.6 million. The assessed value after applying the Measure 50 discount, it's a change property ratio, is just about 2.8 million. So what, what that is, is it takes the current average real market value across the property type and the average assessed value, and it applies that discount, about 50% for residential, to that new value. So the impact and why it matters to us is I took a allocation. So for those 12 housing units, if you took the general fund cost of service across all housing units, and in Salem, it would be about $21,240. The annual property taxes received from those 12 houses is just over $16,000. So there's a delta there. Brand-new property comes on the tax rules, it doesn't pay enough to add services to service those units. And then without the Measure 50 discounts, it would be just under $33,000 for that same, the same 12 houses. So that, that's just talking about Measure 50. This slide right here talks about Measure 5. It's kind of the other, the other side. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Josh, could you go back to that one slide just one second? So, no, the next one. There we go. So the $21,000, that's for the current service level.
That is correct, yes.
Right. So we are still, I'd want to drive that home. We are still not up to the service level requested by the community, really, and we are down 300 positions at the last count, I believe. Is that about right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Measure 5, if you might remember back to the 90s, it passed before Measure 50, but they do interplay. They're, they're both at work. So what Measure 5 did is it put a limit of $10 per thousand of real market value. It's not assessed value, it's not what taxes are actually based on, and that's the $10 is for general government services. There's another limit, $5 for education services. That's the school district, ESDs, things like that. This matters in Salem, especially on the Marion County side, because the, the combined tax rate is $10.39. That, that includes the city tax rate, the county tax rate, CCRLS, the cooperative library system, and then any other soil or water districts, things like that. So how that plays out is for properties where the real market value is, is close to assessed value or equal to assessed value, they go into compression. So you levy $10.39, you're allowed to levy $10. So the property taxes are reduced, $10 are applied. So all the taxing districts share permanent rates, they share that 39 cent discount. So everyone's receipts are reduced by that 39 cents. Local option levies, just to touch on them real quick. If there were a local option levy on the Marion County side, it gets compressed first. So before you get any discount to permanent taxing districts, local option levies go to zero. And then just real quick, because you get this question a lot, general obligation bonds, they're outside of these limits. So our current, our current rate, I think we just looked, it was $1.16, $17. It's outside of this limit.
So Josh, just to reiterate that. So if we were to pass a levy on the Marion County side of the city, there would be, we would not actually receive any of that levy, is that correct?
Not quite. So that not all properties are in compression. In fact, right now, there's fairly few properties that are in compression, because if you've been watching the real estate market, values are up in the last several years, so that spread is much higher. So as long as there's enough spread between real market value and assessed value, there's no compression. But the problem happens, like in 2007, 2008, when property values decline, and it gets down right at that assessed value. If real market value goes down, the assessed value goes with it, and it doesn't go back up. It rebases at that lower level, and that's where you see massive compression. I think last year, I think it was around less than $400,000 of compression, you know, back in, you know, '09, '10, '11, you know, it was well over $1 million. So that, that's the challenge that happens, and that's just with our permanent rate. If there was a local option levy, you would see that even more.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
No, it's me. I was just wondering, for me and others who might not know, how is real market value attained? How do you get that?
So that's a function of the county assessors. So I can't, I can't speak to it. I know there's a rotation where they, you know, value various properties. I will say that it doesn't matter as much as it did back in, back before Measure 50. Now that there's a separation, most taxes are based on, or most, most taxes are based on the assessed value. So the real market value might get not as adjusted as much, but it's a county function. They're, they're in charge of adjusting that real market value.
Real, I'm not a Realtor. Real market value to me is like, oh, did you go to Zillow and see what that property's worth? I mean, that's where my mind goes. So do you get these numbers from the county, then?
Yeah, we get them from the county, and I have compared them to like the Zestament or Redfin Estament. They're a little off, right? So it depends on the property. Sometimes they're high, sometimes they're low, and there's a lot of factors. I will say that, you know, those kind of valuations are more real-time, whereas I think the, you know, assessors, it's a little more of a look back. But no, they're not 100% tied to those, but it's really a county function.
And how is assessed value determined? Is that also the county's responsibility?
It is. That one I can speak to a little more intelligently. So back in, when Measure 50 was adopted, property taxes or property values, that assessed value was frozen. They actually, I believe, took a 10% reduction, and then it's been marching up at 3% each year since then. And that's for existing properties. For new properties, that's where they come on like the, the 12-house model, where, you know, now the change property ratio is about 50%. It used to be more like 92% when Measure 50 was first introduced. So the real market value gets discounted down to that assessed value. It's supposed to mirror, like for Marion County, it's supposed to mirror, most properties are about 50%. New properties coming on are going to be about 50% too. The one, the one thing that makes it a little interesting is not all properties are at 50%. So that, that's an average, but you have properties that are much higher and much lower.
And the county determines those numbers? That's where you guys get your information?
We do. We get a comprehensive download from the county every year, but generally, it's easy to calculate for existing properties because it's just a 3% increase.
Counselor Stapleton?
Could you speak a little bit about where Polk County is at? As we know, we have two counties we're dealing with. And then what would happen if a levy did pass? Would that just mean that Polk County residents and some of Marion County residents would be paying for the full amount? Or would that mean that we would get less? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. So the, the way you would calculate that is you'd actually have to over levy, so you'd have to increase the amount you want to collect because you know that it would create compression. And that would be only on the Marion County side. So all Polk County properties, you know, it's under $10 the combined, the combined rate, so you wouldn't see compression there. So all, all Polk County property owners would pay the, the tax. On the Marion County side, most would pay the tax, but there would be some properties in compression that wouldn't pay it.
Josh, can you explain what puts some properties in compression and not others? I didn't quite understand that.
Yeah, so, so it could be, it could be a couple things. One, if the real market value drops, like what we saw in 2007, so the real market value declines, if, and when it goes equal to or below the assessed value, that, that it becomes the assessed value. I was looking at property today, they're equal, because they've, they've been marching up together. The assessed value hasn't caught up to where the real market value is. So some of it's built in from back in the 90s when properties were brought on the tax rules. Others, it happens when the, when you see a decline in, in real market value to get to that assessed value line.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips?
I guess another way that would help me to think about this would be, do we have any sense of like what percentage of properties are on average in the last couple of years subject to compression?
You know, I don't have that prepared today, but I'll definitely get it back to you.
Okay. Is it less than half?
It's much less than half, yes. It's actually very few properties that are in compression, and that's just really due to the real estate market and the value that we've seen increased.
So I guess a follow-up question to help understand this and clarify it for me and others possibly. You mentioned that, like currently or recently, it's been about $400,000 of, I presume, revenue that we would otherwise get, but we don't get because of compression, whereas back in the 2008, the last, the Great Recession, we lost over a million or about a million?
Yeah, that's correct. I can bring back the precise numbers.
Totally. But that's, that's like for the whole, that's for the whole year for the budget. So you're, we're missing out on the, you know, either right now, 400,000 versus a million when things are bad.
Yeah, that's correct.
And that's spread out over essentially just the people in Marion County.
That's correct, and that is only the Salem portion. So all taxing districts share in that amount, so it's about an equal amount that other taxing districts lost out also.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize if I missed this. Why is it that homes billed from 2019 to 2021 have this massive reduction under Measure 50 as opposed to homes pre-2019?
So each year, the county adopts a change property ratio. So that's the average real market value of all the housing units in that class and the average assessed value. So they take that ratio, which for this year, it's about 50%, and they apply that. So it's been steadily decreasing that spread, or that discount's been increasing since the change property ratio was put into place from Measure 50. So it used to be in 92%, and now it's about 50%.
Josh, you keep referring to the county. You mean the county assessor, don't you?
I do mean the county assessor.
Thank you. I think it's, I think that's important, that that's an, that's an independently-elected official, and it's, it's the county assessor that does that, that makes the difference.
Yes, they do. They certify the tax rules. Yes, they do. They certify the tax rules. That's correct.
Thanks. Counselor Nishioka.
Thank you. So as you're saying, the compression or the reduction started at 92% and has gone down and down and down. And we're about 50 now. So like in five years, is it going to be like 40? Or can you guess?
I think everyone's trying to figure that out right now. Because that's really, it would really be a question of what the property values are going to do. So if property values continue to increase, you know, we've seen a couple of years where they've been fairly flat now. But if they were, if interest rates go down, values go up, we would see a further separation. So it could dip into the 40% range.
Counselor Phillips.
This, thank you. So this question might not be something the staff can answer. But I'm just trying to understand. I mean, this is, we're dealing with the, you know, the state, you know, ballot initiatives from 30 years ago. Is there, was there some idea of there being a good for this? Like, was it to spur building new homes? Like, what's the upside of this? Or was there any upside other than to shrink the revenue available to government?
Dismantling local government was the goal, in my opinion.
I didn't vote back in the 90s, but you know, there were lots of goals. I guess the one thing that it did do is it decreased the cost to taxpayers. A lot of people see that as a good thing. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to Krishna Namburi to talk about general fund vacancies.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening. Krishna Namburi, Deputy City Manager. So during the September 18th work session, the council asked us to bring back information on vacancies and furloughs. So the number of vacancies we currently have is 80, and out of which you can see that 35 of them have been unfilled for more than six months. Now, of course, these numbers kind of quickly changed based on departures and hires. I just kind of wanted us to remember that. It's important to note that, if you can see the star and double star, so it's important to note that there are total of 24 positions on hold for hiding within the police, fire, and library. And this was intentional due to the funding uncertainties and with the aim of using these positions to prevent layoffs. So, and also, if we continue to keep these vacancies unfilled, I do want to kind of highlight that we won't be able to sustain current services in these departments. And we'll need to plan for service reductions in some areas. So the other piece that to look at, there are some positions, like within the Enterprise Services Department, we are having challenges to recruit, and we have several failed recruitments. And these are critical positions for us. The HR department is currently evaluating these classifications and compensation to see how to kind of move forward. The thing that I do want to kind of mention in your package, there is additional information and the impact of not filling each of these positions. And also, a memo from both the police chief and the fire chief. So you should be, see that. Next slide. Thank you. So the vacancy rate right now is 10%, but it drops to 7% if you exclude those on hold positions. So this vacancy rate is actually normal for an agency of this size. And we looked at vacancies at other cities, and in other cities in Oregon. Hillsborough is at 10% vacancy rate, Gresham is at 13%, and Beaverton is at 7%. And we do have information on other cities, and the staff are actually collecting the data. If you're interested, I'm more than happy to share that at a later point. The one thing that I think I do want to highlight on this slide is, so regardless of the number of positions that we have, vacancies will always be part of our operational reality. So even though we have, currently, we have like 790 general fund positions, but our typical operating workforce is around 720 because of the vacancies that we have. And if we were to eliminate these vacancies, our number of positions shrink from 790 to 720, right? So from that, even though you have those 720 filled positions, would inevitably create additional vacancies, right? So that results into reducing that operating workforce to around 650 or 660. So you're kind of shrinking the organization further. So we do have a high turnover right now. There have been 135 departures in the past six months. And also, our hiring process has become lengthy. It's partly because of lack of resources in the HR department to recruit fast. And also, it is a competitive job market out there. So the other piece that we are kind of seeing a trend, I think we kind of talked about it last year and the year before, we kind of anticipated this, but when tenured staff retire, it's becoming challenging to recruit for these positions because it's never a one-to-one replacement. And then this is because of the number of job duties these positions have accrued over the years. So regarding the furlough data, there is a potential savings of 166,600 for a single day. And that is excluding public safety. There are several risks and challenges associated with this approach. And firstly, we would need to negotiate this with our unions. And it's also kind of important to note that reducing staff hours would definitely result into reduced service delivery because of our existing staff is already stretched thin. I would also like to kind of highlight that in your package, you should see one document on furloughs that has actually detailed information on what it means for us to kind of look into that option. What I would like to highlight from that is 23% of our workforce is, consists of management employees, non-reps. And most of these employees at the city already work for more than 40 hours to keep up with the workload. And now, if we reduce the work week, any hours worked beyond the regular work week, that would require us to pay them overtime. So if you're really looking at it, we might, because of the demand of service and the number of hours we are already kind of, the employees are already putting in, we might end up spending the saved money on overtime. So I just kind of want to highlight that. And the staff burnout and their overall well-being have been significant concerns for us over the years. And we also anticipate that, that there's going to be retention and recruitment challenges with this option. So I do kind of want to highlight that.
Any questions or, Counselor Phillips?
Thank you for that presentation. I think that it kind of comes up because we're a capital city. So we have the state government, you know, in large part is housed here. And I think the state government has more experience with doing furloughs. But the, and I don't have, you know, experience with either, you know, what it is to do the operations of city government or state government. But I think our community may have a little more understanding of that because a lot of people probably live here, work in state government. Why is this not analogous? Like, it doesn't seem like it's analogous. It seems like, as a city government, we just can't really compare ourselves to state government, which I hear, you know, in community events. So could you help me understand, like, in what ways is it different? I mean, I think you've done an excellent job of explaining it, but just help us kind of connect the dots, since we so frequently get compared to the state government.
Yeah, absolutely. The one thing that, if you see the number of employees state has versus the number of employees at the city, it is actually significantly different, right? So I can't really like, but I can compare our city with Eugene, which you might have seen in the recent, you know, media reports, that we are significantly understaffed compared to the other cities. So we have been operating with that. We don't have backups for positions. As you're looking at those vacancies, many of them are critical positions for us to operate. So as far as answering your question, Counselor, the simple answer is, they have much bigger pool of resources compared to what we have.
I think another part of that, though, is also that we're a direct service provider primarily. We're actually, I mean, most of our employees are providing services to the public. Whereas at the state level, that's not always the focus. They're doing kind of higher level, bigger picture things. Counselor Nordeig.
Thank you, Krishna. I very much appreciate your presentation as always. I do want to make sure I'm understanding. So we have 790 FTEs authorized. Is that correct?
In the general fund.
In general fund, thank you.
In general fund, yeah.
I'm just trying to keep track of all the numbers here. And you indicated that if we eliminated all these vacancies, which nobody wants to do, we all know, we're in a very dire predicament here. No one's in favor of doing any of these cuts. If we eliminated them and brought it down to closer to 720 or so, I think you said that it would create even more vacancies. Can you just explain a little bit more what you mean by that? Why, I think you were alluding to it because it would mean that now people would have to work even more. They're covering for yet another person who is now no longer, not going to be here in the immediate future. But I just want to make sure I understand from you, why do you think eliminating all those vacancies would trigger even more people leaving?
Yeah, absolutely. So the way we look at it, this is kind of normal for any agency. So we have 790 funded positions, right? So our operating workforce is usually whatever minus vacancies. So that's kind of what I'm looking at, that 720 number as our operating workforce. Let's say if we were to eliminate these vacancies, so our number of funded positions becomes 720, right? Now, that will create, like, let's say 5% vacancies or 7% vacancies, right? I'm just kind of picking seven to eight at this point. But, and so that would create additional, like 60 vacancies, right? So I'm operating at, my operating workforce now is 720 minus 60.
So in other words, 720 becomes your new normal, and then there's a, normally a 10% or a 7% vacancy rate of whatever your operating numbers are.
Yeah, so we would never be in a situation where we are 100% filled, right?
Counselor Nishioka.
Thank you. So I just want to have you state again, in a comparison of other cities, other cities have a percentage as well. And we're actually fairly low, or a little bit lower than some other cities that have a vacancy rate. And I'd like you just to sort of re-say that again.
So I just have to say, it's Michelle Bennett, Assistant Director for HR Department. She did the analysis over the past two days. So it's kind of a rough estimation that we have. So we do, we do see like some cities that are actually below those vacancy rate. I think it's bent at 4%. And Eugene is at the same percent as us, 7%. But Hillsborough has 10%. Gresham has 13%. Beaverton has 7%. I think the reason why we did that study, just to be able to kind of see that's a normal way of running business, that we will have a certain number of vacancies.
Thank you. And then, just a follow-up question in regard to the recent article media that was talking, comparing Salem and Eugene and the number of employees, even though we are slightly larger than Eugene, there was a difference of about 1,000 people. They have like 2,300, and we have like 1,300. And that was a really big surprise to me, how well we are doing with the limited resources of people.
They have a much higher permanent tax rate than we do.
I know. Very frustrating.
Just to kind of comment on that, we are actually kind of experiencing now that when we are ready to hire for positions, a lot of times candidates are saying, no, thank you, because you're asking me to do two or three people's job through this, right? So we had a couple of failed recruitments through that process within the Enterprise Services Department. So I just kind of want to highlight that it is, it's a tough situation to be in.
Counselor Phillips.
Yeah, for the sake of being redundant, so what I'm hearing for the vacancies is some of this is probably just people are at the end of their career and they're retiring. Some people are moving for whatever reason. There's sort of a natural turnover. But then in addition to that, natural turnover, retirements and so forth, you also have the burnout and the demand of work. So do we have any sense of like, how much a percentage of our, I mean, like, you're alluding to it with the fact that we're having failed recruitments. But do we have any sense, like, how many vacancies we would have, or what percentage is due to burnout? And the expectation of doing the work of two to three people?
Yeah, all I can give you is, over the past six months, we had 135 departures. Out of that, 34 were actually, I think, retirements. So we lost like around 100 people. So, you know, to me, I see more and more people, you know, leaving the city if this continues moving forward. Because I think over the years, we talked about it, maybe a couple of years ago, we kept reassuring staff that there's going to be more help. And so they continue to do whatever. But I think at this point, what we hear a lot, and if Michelle Bennett wants to speak on that, she can. But we hear quite a bit in the HR department about work-life balance. And that's, and employees, when I say the employees' well-being, mental health, and just to be able to, they all want to do the good work. And when we say, hey, just do whatever you can do in 40 hours, right? For them, they want to produce good work. They don't want to go home, leaving things behind. So they're kind of there to kind of take care of that. So I think that's kind of what really causes that burnout. Because they do care and they want to do the good work, so.
Counselor Nordeig.
Do we know what the value is of these 80 vacancies for a year?
I think that's for me. We don't have that specific number. Vacancy savings is a challenge. When you have an employee that departs the city, often if it's a retirement, it comes with a fairly large leave payout. So it's really hard to calculate the precise savings from vacancies. We could take an estimate for those positions, but I don't have that today.
I would appreciate that. I mean, it'd be nice to know, you know, what's the budget for the 80 positions, at least? And maybe that's something you can get back to us.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Where are we headed next, Josh?
Onto the specific reduction scenarios.
All right.
This first one is a repeat. You guys saw it at our last work session. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but feel free to ask questions. Just real quick, included the new, many of the new city operations fee positions and the other new positions in the general fund. Included six FT at the library, six FT for fire, four FT for police. In 2025, all Salem funding for the micro shelters, eight additional FT at the library, Center 50 Plus Recreation Parks Operations, youth development, police graffiti abatement, our social service grant program, approximately $400,000, our sheltering services, safe park and warming, a top grant redirect. So that's in the Cultural Tourism Fund, redirecting some grant funds to fund parks operations. In 2026, all funding for this Salem fund, for the Navigation Center, one fire station, 12 police positions. And then again, in 2028, a second fire station. And before we jump into the other options, I will say that they're all, like Keith mentioned, laid on top of the September 18th proposal. So you'll see this mechanism where it's the newer continued service. Basically, they're pulled out of the reductions from the 18th, and then you'll see additional reductions and trade-offs. But when we talk about the reductions, it's in addition to everything else that we just talked about in the last few slides. few slides. This option 2 is to maintain the two new park rangers, the SOS team expansion to seven days a week, and the two police homeless service team officers. And in response, the reduction or trade-off in 2025 is to eliminate the special program outreach team, and that is the first time you've heard that. It was formerly known as the ATRAP program. And then additional cost recovery for planning and recreation. And the impacts of those are listed out in the staff report. Option 3, there was a request for no reductions to public safety. So, in the original proposal, there are 43 positions that were proposed to be eliminated from public safety. This maintains all of those positions. And the trade-off is, again, that special program outreach team, the cost recovery for planning, recreation, closing the main library branch in fiscal year 2025. And so, that's July of 2024, so just a few short months away. Fiscal year 2026, closing the Center 50+. And then in '27 and '28, eliminating several internal service positions, in addition to two code compliance officers, one position municipal court, and five additional parks operation positions.
And that's all in addition to the three pages of reductions previously outlined?
Yes, that's correct. So, all the public safety was restored, but everything else is still reduced. Option 4, continuing the micro shelter grant funding and continuation, continuing the navigation center grant funding. So, these aren't currently in the general fund, so this would be pulling them into the general fund. The trade-offs are, again, the special program outreach team, planning and recreation cost recovery, elimination of the library branch, or the, the main library, sorry, closing Center 50+. The one big difference for this option is in fiscal year 2026, is an additional six police positions, and then the same internal positions for, and then code compliance municipal court and parks operations. And that's actually all of our presentation. I have some next steps here, but I'm assuming there will be questions about the reduction scenarios. So, I'll just pause here for that.
Questions on the reduction scenarios? Counselor Phillips.
It might not be now. It might come, be coming later. But I had asked last session and in our breakout sessions, to get an estimate for, like, what potential savings we could achieve by decreasing the main library hours by, like, a day. I know that we're losing some, like, I think our, we're going to close the West Salem Branch Library starting in early 2024, but, you know, if we don't close it outright, how much can we, like, how much do we gain financially to pay for something else if we close the library by a day, decrease its hours by a day?
And I'll defer to Scott Archer for that.
So, a couple, couple points on that, Counselor. One is, we, we did, in your scenario number one that was presented on September 18th, there was a reduction in library services scenario that proposed it would close one day a week, plus even a couple hours on, on additional days. So, that was spelled out, and I can't remember what the, that dollar amount is. But if you're just asking for a per-day operational cost roughly, we're looking at about $20,000 a day, any, any day. So, what, that's, that's a very high-level estimate, and, and it's, it's not an exact way of doing it, but we, we just sort of took our, our total budget and we divided it by the number of operational days we have at the library per year, which is about 307 per year. So, it's, it's a nuanced answer, but if you're literally just saying, for each day that we reduce the library, it's, it's about $20,000.
So, you'd take 20,000 times 52 and come up with an annual amount?
It's 20,000 times 307 operating days. So, we deducted, so we write, right now, we're operating at-
I was thinking one a week, sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're running, the library right now, today, is six days a week. And then we also deducted our holiday closures. So, we're, we have about 307 days, I believe is what we came up with.
But if you were trying to annualize the amount, that's what I was getting at. So, what would you, like, isn't that what you're looking for, isn't-
Yeah, I mean, I think that, like, when you multiply three, the 307 by 20,000, you're looking at the total cost of the library.
That's right.
So, I think possibly multiplying by 52 is close to, because that's one day a week. If you reduce it by one day a week, instead of, like, closing the whole thing.
Right. There's a diff, that's another way of, yeah. I was, I was talking about just exactly, literally the exact, you know, kind of one day.
Yeah. Yeah, in other words, if you reduce the library operations by one day a week for a year, what would that save?
Yeah.
That's, I think that's what the Counselor was trying to get at.
Yeah. So, yes, that would be by 52 roughly. But I think, in, in a, roughly, that's, that's around the type of proposal that we, was in, option number one, when we, when we proposed to reduce a, a day per week. But we also shaved off some hours and some programming, so that wasn't an exact thing. So, yes, I understand what you're saying, Mayor. That's, that's correct.
Plus, that also assumes that you could actually staff a library that way, and that you could find people who are willing to work for that, you know? It's, so you'd have to do a lot of other things to make that work, but-
It's not an exact, it's, it's the best we can say, kind of roughly, in the moment, and it's not an exact way of looking at it, because there are nuances to, you know, amortizing building costs, operating a building over a year, and staffing, and all of the different factors. But yeah, that's a rough way of looking at it, so.
So, I bring it up because I asked about option 2. And, you know, when I look at this, and I appreciate the, the scenario spelled out like this, I mean, it makes me appreciate more where staff started with option number one. I don't know that we need two new park rangers, given this parade of terribles that we're choosing between. I do think, you know, hiring at least one new could be important, especially when we look into the future years of not having as much, you know, managed, managed micro shelter sites or the navigation center funded. I do think it's important to really try our best to fully staff out a, seven days a week, the SOS team. But I don't feel comfortable with eliminating the special program outreach team. We just got really good testimony from Jimmy Jones about, you know, the importance of those, you know, that outreach to, you know, get people plugged in locally to shelter and housing. So, it makes me very concerned about eliminating this. I mean, I get that some people are, like, super concerned about, you know, reducing the library even further than some of these draconian cuts we're already looking at. But there's no good options here, and so we're just looking for the least terrible. I think rather than eliminating the outreach team, my preference in these bad options would be, one, that we don't have to do any of them, and that we raise revenue. But if we aren't able to raise revenue in November, then option 2, but switching out, you know, the, the, eliminating the special program outreach team, exchanging that for a further reduction of the main campus library hours.
Counselor, it's difficult for me to picture increasing staff when we're doing all of these reduction scenarios. I, I would love to increase it to seven days a week, just flat out, for sure. But when we're looking at all these reductions, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around increasing a program when all of these others are having such drastic decreases. That's the challenge I'm having with that scenario. I, I mean, I get why. I mean, I would love to increase it to seven days a week. I just don't know in this environment if we can do that.
No, I, I hear it completely. And that's where, again, I, I go back to staff's original position is, is much more understandable now.
Yeah.
My concern, though, is that if we don't fund the managed micro shelter sites and the navigation center, you know, in a year and a half, six months, like, when we start losing those services, there's going to be an increased demand specifically on this thing. So, I, I mean, if we were to go to increase in any one area, I still think this is it. Again, I can agree that we don't necessarily need to go to two new park rangers, like, probably just doubling is the biggest bang for the buck. But if, I, I still think that this is probably necessary. But if, you know, ultimately, the, the will of the body is option one, staff's original position, I understand. It's just, I still think that this is probably slightly better. But it's terrible. These are all terrible. I mean, like, we just need to raise revenue. And I think at some point, we'll start talking about, you know, what happens if we're not successful in November.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to close the question that Counselor Phillips asked, understanding the, the way in which you were asking that, if we took the rough cost of it per day of running the library and we reduce that one day per week over 52 weeks, we're looking at about a million-dollar savings, just to close that loop.
Thank you.
Counselor Nordak, did I see your hand?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I do have some questions about the options as presented. Some of them are nitty-gritty, and some of them are more overarching comments. On option one, for the eliminated positions, as I understand it, the first positions we would eliminate are all vacancies, not people, correct?
Can, can you go back to that slide, Josh?
It would be Slide 15. That is what I was looking at.
Yeah, that, that is correct. For all the 2024 reductions, they're all currently vacant positions.
Great, thank you. One thing I don't, it's not readily apparent to me from how the slides are described, but as we move through this process, I always want to know, of these proposed reduction options, am I eliminating a vacancy, or am I creating a layoff? So, just for future reference, I, you know, when we look at all these slides, I just really want to make sure it's abundantly clear, which of these eliminations are vacancies and which ones would involve sending someone out of the office?
Yeah, in general, the 2024 positions are vacant, and all the others in the future years are not.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Or, or they, they might be by the time we get there, right? There's a time element here that's a little challenging.
Right, because you don't know when other people might leave. I understand that. If only we had a crystal ball, Mr. Mayor, this would make everything so much easier. So, okay. The other question I had, and this may be more of an HRE-type question, when we're looking at eliminating vacancies, and I will just repeat what I said last time, I prefer eliminating vacancies before laying off a single person, full stop. That's just how I, that's my preference. Someone who has decided to show up and come to work here, who has decided to dedicate themselves to public service, I wouldn't want that person laid off until we've tried everything else. That's how I feel. That's how we did it in my office at DOJ years ago. We had all kinds of painful, horrible things that we all went through, but we sucked it up for the time being, because my managers were doing everything they could to avoid laying somebody off. And we always remembered that. So, I think in terms of office morale, of course, furloughs suck, costs of living adjustment freezes suck, hiring freezes suck. None of this is good. So, I'm not trying to diminish that pain, because I've been through that as a state employee. But I just want to really articulate, I prefer layoffs as a last resort for any of our positions. Now, going back to my questions, for that Slide 15, you recommended eliminating library, fire, and police positions. Would you, would the city recommend starting with the vacancies that are more than six months old from the various departments that have vacancies that old? I'm just kind of curious. Like, if you had to make those decisions, do you start with the oldest vacancies first?
I can attempt to answer the question. So, similar to what you were just saying about prioritizing vacancies first, that's how this proposal was built, and that's why you see vacant positions in the first year. So, that, that is definitely the priority. As far as the length of the vacancy, that creates a not very nuanced way of eliminating positions. Like, there are certain positions, we've had multiple failed recruitments, and it's a really critical position. We'd still like to have that position over a different vacancy. Krishnan?
Yeah, I think Josh covered it. So, for example, I have the Chief Information Security Officer position. It had two failed recruitments, but I do have to recruit for that, right? So, I don't think we are going to go with the, the length of the vacancy. It is going to be based on the position that we are trying to recruit for.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Mr. Mayor, I have a couple more.
Sure.
Oh, let's see. Next, on Slide 16, the TOT grant redirects. TOT standing for transient occupancy taxes. What, what does that grant redirect mean? I was under the impression that if you collect them from tan, transient occupancy taxes, hotels and such, that you can only use them for specific purposes. Can someone please explain that to me?
Yeah, so the transient occupancy tax, that's right, short for TOT. It goes in the cultural tourism fund. There are allowable uses. One of them is parks maintenance and several different tourism-related properties, of which we're not fully recovering those costs. So, it's an allowable use of these funds. So, this would be reducing grants to facility operators and events by approximately 10%, so about $70,000 to redirect it toward parks.
I get it. So, instead of, say, giving the money to Gilbert's House, we could give that, use that money for our parks staff positions that might otherwise be on the chopping block, just randomly, thinking of who might have gotten TOT money in the past?
Go ahead, Scott.
I'm not trying to pick on Gilbert's House. It just came to mind, because I remember they got one in the past.
I think, Counselor, I think there are a number of different ways we could apply that reduction to our grants program. We could, we could just simply drop everybody's allocation by whatever the percentage is, 10% in this case. Or, the grant committee could just award fewer grants to meet that lower threshold. So, there, I think there's some different ways we could approach that.
Okay, thank you. I had a similar question about the social services grants and the amounts of $400,000. Can someone explain to me how that would work?
I think we have Kristin online, but I'll take a, I'll take a stab at it. So, that's the full program. So, currently, we have about $400,000 program for those social service grants. So, those wouldn't be available if this proposal went into place.
Ms. Rutherford has joined us. Perhaps she has more detail.
Yeah, Josh is correct, that this would, but this would apply to the next year's future allocation. Everything that was awarded this cycle would remain in the budget. This would give us, you know, a year's worth of time to work with those nonprofits and educate them and give them opportunities to look for other sources of funds for those programs.
Okay, thank you. My next question to do with, again, staying on that slide, the fire station eliminations, would those be concentrated in one or more station, or would they be spread out across multiple stations?
Mike Nebeloff, Fire Chief. We have not determined which station or stations will be closed yet. That's a few years away. So, we're still doing analysis on exactly which station we would close. It would not be a rolling closure. It would be a specific station that we would close. So, we would close it completely. That area of town would have less fire service and less EMS service. So, multiply that by two, and I think we provided you the information on how many people will be impacted by that over the long term. It's a staggering number, like 10,000 a year. We'll get the response time.
Okay, thank you. I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you, staff.
Counselor Stapleton.
Yes, I was hoping, if, Kristin, if you could jump back on, could you tell us who received these social service grants this year?
You're on mute still, Ms. Rutherford.
Thank you. For example, Marion Pope Food Chair, Northwest Human Services, other past recipients have been St. Francis, Center for Open Safety. These funds are typically used to augment case management for our nonprofits.
Great, thank you.
Further questions on this section? Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you. I'm going to go back and ask a question about the library, so this will be for you, Mr. Archer. I have had a few, or I've read some testimony in questions about West Salem Library and closing that, because there's a lease with, I guess, historically, there's been a lease with Roche Roth Grocery Store, who owns the property, and there's some concerns about the lease if it closes. Can you talk about that?
Sure. I think what you're referencing is, in our, our lease agreement that goes back to the creation of that building, in the, I think in the early 90s, there is a provision that basically says, so, the, the mall owner, the property owner owns the underlying land, but we, the city, own the building. And the condition in our agreement is, it, it says that if we ever cease to operate that as a library, the, the landlord could say, "We want you to restore that to its original condition," which is no building on that site. So, we haven't, we haven't fully explored that, and, you know, whether that would be a hard and fast situation, but that's what the language says.
Thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a couple meetings on this topic, the reductions. We can, as a council, adjust a budget, right, at any time. One of these decisions have to be made.
Yeah, I really appreciate the question. So, if you were to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget, which if, if you're-
2024 budget, which if, if you're looking to do that, I'd recommend doing it prior to the fiscal year 2025 budget cycle. So we're looking around February to adopt a supplemental budget that did the first round of reductions. As far as each additional year, that would be part of that budget cycle. So it wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to decide all that once, it would be each individual year making those decisions.
Yeah, I know the recommendation is as soon as possible, but what's, my question is what's the latest before we make these, have to make these decisions?
I mean, in reality.
Reality, yeah.
The fiscal year 2024 positions are vacant, so there's not expense accruing. What it does do is it makes fiscal year 2025 a much deeper reduction. It's still doable, but...
No, just, yeah, for the, for the, yeah, before June, I mean, literally, right?
Yeah, before June.
So we have six months.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
It's making me a little nervous, but yes, that's correct.
Well, just the community gets nervous. I mean, we have people out, out there in the community saying, I don't want to scare you, but, they scare people. So it's happening already. And that's one thing I wanted to avoid, and I want to be clear that we have time. And, you know, we've crammed a lot of, we've crammed a lot of meetings into, you know, right before the election, right? And so I just want to be, the people to be clear that we have time.
So, so just one, one comment. So we're going to start fiscal year 2025 budget development very soon, right? So January, February, you'll see the five-year forecast in January, Keith, and we'll work on budget development for fiscal year 2025. So that process will start in April. So we'll have to make decisions about the next budget at that time with the Budget Committee. And then the council will have the opportunity to adopt it prior to July 1st.
So why are we having this discussion now?
I can help with that. We're having this discussion so that we can be prepared, depending on what happens at the beginning of November, for our next steps. We do have to adjust our budget going forward. The sooner we do that, the more flexibility and capacity we will have going forward. As Josh just said, if we wait to do this until our 2025 budget process, it becomes a very drastic change in our service, and will have impacts to our employees and impacts to our budget that are significant. Our recommendation is, as soon as we have some certainty about where we are from a revenue perspective, we start this process of looking at our 2024 budget and making the reductions that we can there so that we're in a better position starting 2025. And again, we're also going to be talking about here in another slide, about what are we going to do from a revenue perspective? So there's the two levers that we've been talking about here. One is preparing for the reductions, the other is considering what possible revenue alternatives are, there are.
Thank you for that. It was Counselor Phillips that brought up the election. That is a little less than two weeks away, and I guess it just seems like an opportune moment to paint an ugly picture publicly of what might happen should the measure fail. And I just want to be really clear and transparent about timing and why, why we are doing this now and not after it's determined.
It, it sounds to me, Counselor, like you're suggesting that staff timed this in a way to impact the election, and I, I hope that that's not the case, because I don't believe that's the case.
I just want to understand, because as Counselor Gonzalez mentioned, folks fear that there, or feel that there's a lot of fear around what's being proposed. My own mother called me on the way here and said, I saw your mayor on the news, he said you can't afford to run the warming shelter. And I thought, okay, what's going on? You know, this, is that, is that really our job to run the warming shelter? You know, or a nonprofit's going to do what they do in Salem and pick up the slack and take care of our homeless neighbors who need a place to warm up? So I just want to offer my two cents worth on messaging, and my motivation is clear. I just want transparency and straightforward representation of what we're doing here.
The issue about the warming shelter is that the state dollars were cut, and we're trying to figure out if we're going to run a volunteer network or a paid staff network, and that's the issue, and that's what the interview was about. It's not that we don't run the warming shelters, that's the job of community action. The question is, are they going to do that just on the $150,000 we gave them, or is the money that the state redirected to another purpose going to be used, is it going to be re-directed back to that program? That's the whole issue.
Thanks for the clarity, and I just look forward to some more discussion on potential revenue. So, thank you.
If I may, just real quick, I did have a slide that had some timing listed on it, and I may have skipped over it, so I apologize for that. Sorry, lots of clicking. So, so one of the reasons this timing is critical to have this conversation and the previous conversation in September is because of that revenue component. If the council wishes to stand up a revenue task force, we need time to do that, there needs, there needs to be some preparation. So I say potential a couple times there, because council hasn't directed that to happen. But looking at a potential revenue task force, November through February, that includes member selection, onboarding, there's a lot of education pieces to that. The five-year forecast is in January. It's extremely challenging to present a five-year forecast if you don't know what the picture looks like. So if we don't know potential reductions at that point, it, it, it makes it difficult to look at different scenarios. As far as a potential supplemental budget, I'm looking at February 12th, that's really the, the timing, we would need to roll that into the next budget cycle. That is a council process, so council has a chance to make the budget look different prior to when it gets to the Budget Committee, which starts in April. And there's a bunch of staff, staff budget development there that I don't want to discount. There's a lot of work that goes into producing that budget document, not just from the Budget Office, but from all departments. So that's why we're trying to get an early start to know what, what we want to do and what things look like over the next few months.
Counselor Phillips?
So it seems like now's the time to talk about what I wanted to talk about a little bit earlier. You know, I, I don't know how to say this without talking about the elephant in the room being the election, because it, it goes from we need to do this to we don't need to do this. So that's why there's the possibility or the uncertainty. It's just, we don't know if we have the revenue or not. But I want to be prepared for the possibility of not having the revenue. What I want to talk about is the scope or scale of our, you know, revenue committee. Like, I, I think it has to be huge. Like, I, I think at a minimum, like a Climate Action Task Force-type committee, which had, I think, 37 or 40 members, but I'm not even sure that that's sufficient in scope. I've had other people talk about we would need to do something more analogous to the comprehensive plan update, because clearly the sense that I get from our community is that we are not all on the same page. So whatever we do moving forward, it can't just be this body, you know, like, it, it needs to be a broad, thorough outreach to everybody so that we're not in the middle of pitting the library against police and police against fire and fire against, I mean, that's, nobody wants that, it's not good. All of these cuts, I, I find terrifying still. I still think this is a smorgasbord of awful, but we will govern, govern within the constraints that we have in a couple weeks. So I do want to talk about the scope, and I would say that it should be huge. Add a minimum Climate Action Task Force, which is large, but I don't think that's going to be big enough for the, like, the, the concept of a, a revenue committee, unless it's going to be phased or tiered, but we need to move fast.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you so much. I want to echo what Counselor Phillips said. I agree that having a larger task force is appropriate under the circumstances, and by no means should this body alone be tasked with it. I was on the Climate Action Task Force, and having so many different perspectives in the room was so helpful. That's how we came up with over 800 different strategies to address climate action, and I found that very helpful and enlightening. So I, I second your recommendation of having a larger revenue task force. I would not limit it to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee will have their say, they will have plenty of opportunity to weigh in. If anything, I should say, they should not be on it, because they already have a seat at the table. They already have heightened access to us, to our mayor, and to our staff. So I would say, you, you want different people on the revenue task force. And I would make a real pitch to include folks from Northeast, our communities of color, folks who traditionally have not been invited to these discussions, because these cuts could have a disproportionate impact on our marginalized communities. So I really don't want tokenization on a task force, I really do want diverse points of view, as well as representation from our business community. So those are important to me. I appreciate the fact that on Slide 22, the staff are already saying, what should community engagement look like? Should we do open houses, surveys, listening sessions, and so on? You know, there's, I'm not the expert on that, I do know we've had consultants come in on that sort of thing, so I won't, I don't have further intelligent comments on that. I do want to speak to the library. I just want to make it clear, I'm adamantly opposed to closing the main public branch, full stop. I feel it is essential resource. Are reductions in hours unavoidable? Probably, but I just want to make it clear, I'm adamantly opposed to an outright closure of the main library, recognizing that that means that I would have to look at cuts elsewhere. So just want to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to lend my voice and my opinion to this. I think the discussion of timing, I think, is, is always really important. I, by nature, am a planner. I like to plan out as far as possible. When I look at the dates that you just had up, I think that leaves us 12 weeks after the vote is done, between then and your, your potential date for having a plan to move forward. Within that, I don't know if we're going to know if it's a close election, it could be, you know, a recounting that needs to happen, and so we may not know until later in November, that pushes us out even further. We have three holidays within there, which I know are hard to work around. For me, I think it's really important to be having these conversations right now and starting to plan for the what-if. You know, we have not decided yet, but it will be close, I have, I have no doubt that it will be, really difficult to, to make any kind of predictions now on how this is going to land. I think, like, having the time to plan out as far in advance as we can, like the city manager was talking about, how can we come down in a smooth way instead of an abrupt, is really important to the community. And I think that allows us to have a little space and time to breathe. Trying to come up with a solution is really, really challenging work, whether that's, you know, starting a new revenue task force, or some kind of citywide committee, or open houses. I mean, to me, I, when we start talking like that, I'm hearing months and months of work. And I don't think, even if that committee does their work, then there's all of the work at, you know, the finance committee level, the budget committee level, and then council. And we all know that these things take so long to get to the public hearing, and then to us voting. I think it's really important that we plan for the long haul on trying to figure out next steps if this fails in November. So I want to thank staff for their intentionality here and their planning. I think we're, we're having the right conversation at the right moment, and I appreciate the hard work that's been put into it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Barney?
Thank you. I wanted to echo that. For me, I really appreciate this evening a lot. We talked about a lot of things on September 18th, and we asked a lot of questions, and we asked for these other scenarios. And we have had the chance to have these presented to us this evening, so we have a chance to discuss them. Also, in terms of the public, we often hear, why didn't you tell me about this sooner? Why didn't, wasn't it brought to my attention sooner? By bringing it up now, we leave space for feedback so that people can review, see what we were talking about tonight, so they can see what the materials are, so we can get emails, talk to people about the different ones and what folks like. I mean, I feel it was really appropriate to have all of it now, because if we had held off, I mean, as you said, 12 weeks, I don't think it's really 12 weeks until we jump into what we need to do budget-wise. I was looking at it a couple of months, you know, after a couple more months. So I just wanted to say thank you, I, I do really appreciate this, because I do think it's the time to do it.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there questions or comments? Counselor Phillips?
Just a quick comment. I, I think that, one, we asked for this as a council, at least I did, at our last work session, and I, I think there's a simple expression or saying, like, if you don't make a plan, you're planning to fail. So I think that this is part of that planning process, it has to be done now. This is going to fly by, and if we don't find a way to raise revenue this November, we're going to have to find some way to raise revenue that keeps fire stations open, or keeps the library open, or keeps the center for 50-plus open. And these are all things that will have, you know, dramatic consequences to our community. So, I mean, I'll, I'll say right now, I'm scared. This is still very scary to me as an immersion stream doctor who's practiced here for 15 years. There will be real consequences. I don't see how just not hiring the vacancies that we have will be painless. We know there's a certain amount of work that needs to be done, and we don't have sufficient people to do it. So I, I'm, I'm concerned with all of this, I've called it a smorgasbord of awful, a parade of terribles, but I appreciate staff doing their best to kind of explain what, why they went with option one, and all the different options that we may or may not have moving forward. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I look, I look at the, you know, just the, the length of time it's taken just this body to come up to the speed to where we're at now, and we're steeped in this business quite a bit. So if we waited until December, which is when the election will be certified, to even start that process, to even begin the discussion about, oh, are we going to do a revenue task force? I mean, those timelines get crazy, they're already, well, way too short at that point, and so I don't think we had a choice but to start the conversations now. So that's just my take on it. Where we had a, oh, Counselor Barney?
I did, I did have one question, it was actually, well, from an email that I got today. I was wondering why we're waiting 20 months to close a fire station instead of sooner?
Why, that's, why is that in the staff recommendation?
Well, it's not until fiscal year '26.
Right.
Uh-huh. And I was just wondering why not this coming year?
The way we approach this with our, our first option is to try and minimize the impacts to police and fire, to delay that as long as possible, to give council and the community an opportunity to have this conversation. So we've really focused the cuts early on on those that aren't going to have direct level of service impacts in police and fire. Yes, there are impacts to police and fire, you know, don't get me wrong, but the actual 911 level of service impacts are delayed, again, to hopefully have this conversation.
Okay, thank you. I figured so, but thanks for the response.
Josh, where are we headed?
So the two final questions are, who should be involved in the conversations? You know, we talked about a revenue task force, we talked about the Budget Committee, and also what community engagement would look like. If you're prepared to give direction on those items tonight, that would be great. If not, we can reconvene at a later time to have that conversation.
All right. What's your pleasure, folks? Counselor Nishioke?
So, nothing goes fast enough, and I too am a planner. And I understand and appreciate the idea of having a large body try to help make decisions on revenue, but at the same time, that adds a huge amount of time. And so, and again, just kind of confirming what Counselor Barney said, we need to be here now, because we're going to be needing to make these decisions right away. And so I feel like we're going to need to be getting ready and asking and getting a task force together. I love the idea of open houses, because then you can have a lot of people come to an event and provide the information, their questions, and that can, can... and provide the information, their questions, and that can, can gain a great deal of community output that maybe that larger group could have provided. So I, I feel like we need to get going and start selecting and figure out the best way to select, and start planning open houses, because we need to do it soon.
I think the first ques-- thank you, Counselor, for your comments. I think the first question is, the question, there's an open question out there, is it going to be the Budget Committee, or is it going to be a task force? And I think I'm hearing sentiment that it's a task force and not the Budget Committee, but I think, I just want to make sure that that's really, that I'm hearing it correctly. So it would be helpful if people could weigh in on that. And then I think if it's a task force, then we can start talking about what that looks like. Yeah. Counselor Gwynn?
I'm for a task force.
Okay, good. And Nordike says, and I'm seeing a nod, and a nod, and a nod, and a nod, and a smile, and a finger.
I may not have a question or a comment.
An index finger, just for the record. Sorry, yes.
That's oversimplification. I believe I've already made comments. Do you want to go?
Yeah, go.
So this is what I was hitting on earlier. I think a task force is the minimum. I think my preference would be something even larger in size to create the communication and buy-in that we will need to be successful.
Okay.
So what I would argue for is closer in scope or size or scale to the Comprehensive Plan Update process in a compressed timeframe.
Okay, I think we can talk about the how, once we figure out the what. Like, okay, is it going to be, and it sounds like we are at a task force. So I think we can start giving some direction on what our expectations are for what that process will look like. Maybe the, you know, the general size, I don't think we want to get maybe too prescriptive on that, but we can talk in generalities of what we're thinking in terms of representation, and what we expect out of the community engagement process. We can, we can have those conversations now, and I think if we can reach a consensus, I think as much consensus as we can reach tonight, the better off staff will be and the more appreciative they'll be, because they don't want to have to try to guess what our, what we're, this whole, the majority of this body wants. So that's really what the question is. So I think, I feel like we are at a task force, and then how that looks, then that's our next question. So let's, if we can start tackling that now, what, what are your preferences on what that process or what a task force would look like? And if you want to just give general ideas and let staff come back with some recommendations, that's perfectly fine, too. Or you can be very specific, whatever you'd like to do right now. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how many people are on a task force, if there's a defined, definite number, but it's just coming to me that maybe it would be good for each counselor to have the ability to appoint someone to that task force, or perhaps two people to that task force, so that each ward is represented fairly, to start.
So we, so you're, just to clarify, clear on your suggestion, so every, every member of the council could recommend or appoint two people from their ward?
No. People in the business of numbers, perhaps, people that we would, that we think may have good insight into budgeting and how to, how to work the process. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay, I, that's what I was trying to clarify. So you don't mean by ward?
By counselor.
Okay. Okay. Other thoughts? Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. When I was at LOC, the League of Oregon Cities Conference, we attended a, I don't know, what do they call them? Lecture? Sure.
Breakout session?
Breakout session, something. And they did it on a nonprofit called Healthy Democracies, and I sent this to staff because I'm, I'm really interested in this. And it is a lottery style, and it, it kind of works through a process where the council helps to set up the, kind of, the criteria of how the, the selection would work, and then they invite, you know, 15,000 people or so throughout your city, and whoever applies, those get put into a lottery, and that is created through an algorithm, and they pick one randomly, and those people are assigned to the task. And the reason why I like this idea so much is that it really takes all bias out, so it, and it really invites the community in to the process, and it puts the responsibility on every single member who's there. And I don't think that there, I think that every person who would elect to be a part of something like that and, and join is going to have so much real, real-life input into the process that I don't think you get from appointing certain groups from certain places. I think that when we get into the process of handpicking people, our biases really come out, and that can really kind of create a class structure, that the people maybe on the lower socioeconomic or any other kind of demographic that you can put out there are not represented within that group. And I would love to see this kind of civic engagement through our community, through a process like a lottery process, where people can engage in a way, yeah, that I think it would be really interesting and a good process to go through. I've had some questions about it. This, this nonprofit does pay people for their time to participate, so there is compensation. And they are mediators for the whole process. They provide non-biased information on the challenges, the history of the problem, and the, the group makes a recommendation to council. We could even have them make that recommendation and send it to the voters, any kind of process that, that we would, would deem fitful for this situation. For me, that's kind of where I'm leaning. I know that's a little out and left field for this, but I think that it's time to get really creative.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gwynn?
And I'm not opposed to something like that, but why couldn't we do both? Have some that were the lottery and some that were invited by a counselor?
I know that we've done something similar to what you're describing in relation to our focus groups in the past, when we've done polling and gotten feedback. So I know that that process has been used, or something similar, for that part of it, but I am not familiar with the city using it for the actual task force. But, interesting. Yeah, Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, it sounds like everybody, all the councilors want to be involved in this process, so that's, sounds pretty neat. That was going to be my recommendation, that we're all on it, you know? But also, it'd be nice, as we look at the revenue options, to bring people that will be paying the tax. I want them here, you know, because it's too many times we're talking about people that aren't in the room, so.
Sorry, I was conferring with Mr. Atchison on your suggestion about if we were to all be on it or not, whether or not that that would, how that could, if that could work. And he says it could. It would, it would be a meeting of city council. There are going to be public meetings regardless, so that part doesn't change, so. Other thoughts or comments? Feedback? Direction for staff? Counselor Barney?
More historical whatever question. The previous one, where did the ideas for revenue options come from? Were they just from the task force members, or were there things that were brought to them? How were those generated?
It's a combination. I mean, staff, staff are aware of revenues that are allowed, and then I would say kind of crowdsourcing for the balance, so people would bring up ideas. Feel free to send me ideas right now. We've thought about putting out some kind of list so that people can see what we're currently considering and talking about whether or not it's, we're preempted, or it's allowed, things like that, so we don't get repeat ideas. But, yeah, some combination.
Counselor Phillips?
I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but is there a role for hiring a firm or a consulting firm to help us be successful? I ask that because maybe there's just a way of raising revenue organ that we haven't thought of, and a professional could help us with that process. And then is that allowed? Like, I mean, this body has already been a record that at least five of us wanted, five to six wanted to raise revenue. So in that vein, I think most of us see these things that are presented that we're looking as cutting is not great, so I just want to be successful. And I'm concerned that if it's just even a task force and us and staff, like, it's, there's going to be limitations to what we can achieve without a third-party, you know, vendor.
Thank you for having that, that thought, because I guarantee that every staff member in the room was having that same thought about, you know, how are we going to support this? What capacity do we have for this work? You know, we're already, all of us are already, you know, fully employed and fully engaged, so we would likely need to bring in some additional support to help with, you know, facilitation of the meetings. You know, if you're talking about doing something like, you know, a lottery, or focus groups, or that sort of thing, of course, we're going to need consulting services for that. If we need to do some more fiscal evaluations and option review, certainly our partners from Los Adams have some expertise there that we could rely on. Obviously, we already have them on contract, so with a general understanding that we're developing this evening, I think we can come back again with a proposal that, that, you know, at least we can have a conversation about, you know, I think we kind of have a, the Christmas tree forming here, we've got some ornaments on it, you know, all right, what else are we going to do with it? Are we going to put lights on it? You know, how are we going to, how are we going to decorate this thing? So I feel like even at this point, you know, I've got a better understanding of what your thoughts are, larger than, than smaller, council involvement, obviously, in, in the entire process, broad and community engagement, and also engagement of people that have some expertise in this area. So I think if we come back with a proposal that, you know, does that, that'll give us a point to start a discussion about.
Thank you. I guess my thoughts are, I'm, I hear, I've heard what everybody has said, and my thoughts are, just, I guess, first response to Counselor Phillips, I'm a little bit concerned about making it too large, because I feel like sometimes that can get unwieldy. I, doesn't mean that I don't want broad involvement, because I definitely do. I just get worried about having a group so large that it's just not manageable, or that it just takes too long to, to get to any sort of recommendation. So that's, I'm a little bit hesitant there, but I do think it needs to be of size, for sure. I just don't want, I would hate to see it be so large that it just gets bogged down in kind of process things and things like that. So that, that's one thought I have. But I certainly think, you know, broad representation is critical, and I don't have any particular preference on how that, how the folks are selected. I'm a little bit nervous about Counselor Stapleton's suggestion. She knew that, look at what she was talking. I, I do think that a lottery system could, could be great for certain aspects, but I'm not sure that having people on a Revenue Task Force that are randomly selected would be effective. I'm not sure. I think, I think the timeline that we're looking at, I mean, if you just look at the amount of time it took all of us to kind of get where we are, I think, I'm just worried that we don't have that kind of time. And so that, that's just one thought. I do think that, you know, certainly for input, for feedback, those kinds of things, I love the idea, but I just don't know if that would work, given, given our current situation. So those are my thoughts. Counselor Barney?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Gonzalez. I mean, the, especially, we have a lot of, lot of folks who don't feel represented, and I feel that they need to have a voice in, on this, and I don't know how best to do that, but they need to. I look at the list of who was on the task force before, and I don't see a representative from my neighborhood, you know, like a neighbor on there. So how are we going to get their voice on there? And I think that's really crucial. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate the, the comments. Counselor Phillips?
At the risk of saying something that's not PC, I'm a little bit concerned about, like, the last Revenue Task Force as a model, because there were people that were involved in that, that I'm not sure were ever okay with raising revenue, and came back and actively opposed what was originally going to go to the voters. So I just want to make sure that, like, I'm okay with having, you know, people that are not okay with revenue being involved, but it just, if, if you're already like, no new taxes ever, no new revenue ever, I, I don't know how to incorporate that in this process. So I don't want to invite people in that are not, not there to help us as constructively as possible.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments? Mr. Staley, do you feel like you have enough direction, or do you need more?
I think we have enough direction to bring you back something to continue this conversation.
Okay. All right. Josh, do we have any other agenda items for tonight? Anything else you wanted to cover?
No, not tonight. Thank you.
I do have one.
Mr. Staley?
I hope to see you all on Saturday morning. We'll open the doors at nine o'clock. Coffee will be available, pastries of various sorts and types, maybe doughnuts even, whatever it takes to get you there. We'll start at nine. We, we anticipate ending sometime early in the afternoon, some four to five hours. Not 45 hours, four or five hours.
And we are at the new Ops building.
We are at the new Ops building.
I was there today for a meeting. It was fabulous.
Yeah, it is a fabulous place, so.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Word earned.